It is seven o'clock, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. If everyone could please rise, if you're able, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can we have the roll called?
Sure. Mayor Pape?
Here.
Councilmember Debold?
Here.
Councilmember Hands?
Here.
Councilmember Caldol?
Here.
Councilmember Naff?
Here.
Councilmember Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Silvers?
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, in light of the recent tragedy that occurred in some of our southern states, I'd like to take a moment of silence with the devastation that's occurred and there's over 70 lives that have been lost and many communities completely destroyed. It's impacted, you know, a lot of our neighboring cities. And if we could just take a few moments here just to, in silence, and recognize what has occurred down there and offer up our individual prayers. Okay, first item of business is the approval of the city council meeting minutes. Does anybody have anything? Okay, Councilmember Silvers?
I was going, sorry, I was going to, I'm not prepared, please go on.
That's okay. Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve, or Councilmember Neal?
To move that the council approved the meeting on November 22nd, 2015.
Okay, we have a motion for approval?
And I'll second that.
Okay, Ms. Hands is seconded. All those in favor, anybody saying aye? Oh, excuse me, roll call.
Councilmember Debold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Councilmember Caldol?
Aye.
Councilmember Naff?
Aye.
Councilmember Neal?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Okay, thank you. It's, it's, there's a couple of things I'd like to mention about two gentlemen that are here this evening that are actually retiring from our city council, and that is Mr. Debold and Mr. Naff. These individuals have served us faithfully, and I'd like to say a few words about each one of them before we allow them to leave us for their very last council meeting. Mr. Debold, or Councilmember Debold, as Scott, has served on the city council in Ward 1 since February of 2015. He was appointed to finish out the term of Chad Rowe. He was re-elected in November of 2017, served our community faithfully since that time. He's been a resident for Marion for over 30 years, and has had great understanding not only of the history of Marion, but he's helped to shape the future of Marion for many years to come. Scott's been a teacher and a coach at the Shawnee Mission School District, over 20 years at Northwest, and 15 years at Shawnee Mission West. So, he's helped shape the community for many years to come in the sense of guiding and our future decision-makers and the students itself, has been awesome, and we appreciate that. He's also a talented wood craftsman. He's made numerous items, such as our Christmas tree ornaments that he gives away every year, and he recently made Tim Murphy art plaques that was a, actually was a fundraiser for our park board, and that he, his assistant does all that, obviously free, gratis. He's made a positive impact on our community, proud to call him a friend and colleague. I've been assured he's going to continue to work and serve Marion for many years to come, and we applaud him, and we thank him and his wife Cheryl for his many years of service. If we could give Scott a round of applause. Thank you, Mr. Debold. The next gentleman is Brian Naff. Mr. Naff has served Marion for a number of years as well. He started, actually, in 2006 and served until 2014 on our Marion Park and Recreation Board. So he helped to develop those programs and assisted in guiding our park and rec department itself for all those years. He was appointed to the city council on February 27th of 2017, and he was filling the remaining position of Jim Weimer. He was re-elected in November of 2017. Brian's background in working with the IRS has brought a unique perspective to when dealing with our city budget, okay, his expertise in dealing with all those numbers helped in our budgeting process. And his assistance in selection of our finance staff and our advisors itself was very beneficial and was welcomed. Brian was also instrumental in making sure that we, as a council, stayed focused on local issues and not get caught up in national politics. Proud to have served along this man, consider him a good friend and colleague. We want to thank him and his wife Dieter for all of his years of service, and Brian's going to be sticking around, and we'll appreciate seeing him in the future as well. Let's give Brian a round of applause. As such, you gentlemen are officially excused from your role. You're welcome to stick around, I know you have other pressing duties, you're welcome to leave. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, for those in the gallery tonight who might have this as being their first experience here at city council, I just wanted to point out that today we have new seating, and I am not the reason these two left.
Yeah. I can verify that, that's, thank you, Mr. Silvers. Okay, well, let's see, moving on. Now that we have two empty positions, or, well, actually, I think, I'm gonna get out of order here for installation of the new body members itself. I believe that's the next item, Mr. Engel, is to go ahead and install the next council people.
Yes, Mayor, it is.
Okay. All right, well, I think we have Amy Rider and Jacob Lehey are in our audience. I think our, Julie, I believe, is going to swear, these are two of our newest council members, and we're gonna welcome them aboard this evening, and Julie's gonna administer their oath of office this time.
Mayor, we need to-
We also, yeah, Councilmember Hands and Neal.
Yes, Councilmember Neal, Councilmember Hands, I apologize for that. I have that here somewhere, I was just looking for it in the wrong place. Thank you, yes, we have four individuals. These, Councilmember Hands and Councilmember Neal, obviously, are incumbents, and they are serving another term, and so they're gonna be sworn in this evening as well.
Okay, we will administer the oath, and then I also have your oath of office that you'll need to sign, and then you can just come over here afterwards and sign it. So, I will ask you all to raise your right hand, and you will be repeating after me. I state your name.
I, Ms. Debold.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution and laws
Do I will support the Constitution and laws.
of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
and the Constitution and laws
Constitution and laws.
of the state of Kansas.
Of the state of Kansas.
and the laws and ordinances
and the laws and ordinances.
of the city of Marion.
The city of Marion.
and that I will faithfully
and that I will faithfully.
and to the best of my ability
and to the best of my ability.
discharge the duties of council member
discharge the duties of council member.
so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Give him a round of applause. And now, after signing the appropriate document, if you could find your appropriate seat up here, and have a chair. Thank you.
Yes. We'll sign it real quick, and then we'll take a group shot. Julie, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. And I think the next thing in line is for me to come down.
Swearing in the mayor, come on down. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Bob Pape.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution and laws
that I will support the Constitution and laws.
of the United States of America.
of the United States of America.
and the Constitution and laws
and the Constitution and laws.
of the state of Kansas.
of the state of Kansas.
and the laws and ordinances
and the laws and ordinances.
of the city of Marion.
of the city of Marion.
and that I will faithfully
and that I will faithfully.
and to the best of my ability
and to the best of my ability.
discharge the duties of mayor
discharge the duties of mayor.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Okay, well, moving right along. Okay, Mr. Engel, is our next, in filling the position of Ward 4, would you like to lead us into that, or?
I would, Mayor, yep, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the election of Ward 4 council member. When Councilmember Pape became Mayor Pape, he created a vacancy in the Ward 4 council member seat, that there's two years left in that term. The city code has a process for filling that vacancy. On November 8th, the council announced the vacancy, and that vacancy was posted in our various media outlets. It was picked up also, I believe, by The Star and the Shawnee Mission Post, and I think it may have even elevated up to one of the major television outlets in Kansas City metropolitan area. There was a 30-day period for interested candidates that live in Ward 4 to put in their paperwork and letters of intent. That 30 days expired last Wednesday at 4:30. We had three candidates that expressed interest in that position. The mayor will, per city code, the mayor will facilitate an interview process with them, where he will ask them three questions that they have been provided. We will interview them alphabetically, and then we will have a series of votes to narrow the number down from three to two, and then to one preferred candidate to fill the vacancy of Ward 4. Take it away, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. Okay, I will say, I actually personally know all three of these candidates, and all three are very capable of serving in the capacity of a councilperson, and I'm really excited that we had three come forward and want to assume my, my position, or take my position in Ward 4. We've decided to do this alphabetically by name itself, and how we're gonna actually ask the three candidates to come forward. The first one that we would call up to the podium would be Stacy Chivetta.
Hi.
Okay, thank you, Stacy. We have three questions that we'd like to pose to you, and we'll ask those one at a time, and then there might be some follow-up questions from our council members as well. But in the beginning, the first question is, what do you think is the most important issue facing the city in the next two years?
In the next two years, I think there could be a lot of things facing the city. The biggest things that I'm concerned about are revitalization and development, so that would include the Kmart site in my mind, obviously, and Ward 4, so if you're in there, and dear to my heart, the Kmart site along Shawnee Mission Parkway. And then I'm also serving on the committee to help figure out what to do with downtown, to revitalize downtown, and so that's also something that's near and dear to my heart that I would love to see happen in the next couple of years as well. Those are the two biggest things, I think. There's some other ones, but I won't elaborate too much, other than saying that I think as part of that development and revitalization, I'd like to potentially see some diversity in housing stock that is added to maybe some of those locations.
Okay, all right, thank you. What skills or talents would you bring to the city council?
In my professional job, I'm a project manager for a commercial furniture company. This includes a lot of organization and note-taking, and keeping things straight, and juggling multiple projects, currently managing about $12 million worth of projects, and so I feel like those skills that I have in my professional day job of, like I said, organization, just being on top of things, communication, all of those are things that I think would lead into council very well, listening to constituents, that's my clients, and reading, you know, leading that into getting things done within the city. I'm also very family-oriented, and I think that would serve me very well as a council member with my four-year-old daughters here, and so I think that gives me a unique perspective of being a young family in Marion. Yeah, I think that's, obviously, I'm pretty personable, I know all of you, so I think that also leads, you know, very well, a very well-skilled set.
Great, thank you. Do you have any closing comments for the city council to consider?
I don't necessarily have any closing comments. A lot of this, a lot of the things I think are important were in my letter and my application, statement of qualifications. You know, I ran for this seat in 2019 against Bob and narrowly lost, and I think, it just fueled a passion in me to serve on city council, which is why I ran again this year in 2021. And I'm just super passionate about this city and making, making it, and making sure it stays just right.
Okay, thank you. Does any council member have any additional questions that they would like to ask Stacy before releasing her? Seeing no additional questions, thank you for your being here this evening and your interest in the position.
Thank you all.
Okay. All right, I think our next one, according to the alphabetic order, would be Billy Crone. Please come forward.
Good evening, council, Billy Crone, 6633 Wed Street.
Yeah, oh, thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, starting with question number one, Billy, what do you think is the most important issue facing the city in the next two years?
Well, I think we're lucky that right now there's not major local fires to have to put out, but we shouldn't take that for granted. Our city's sales tax income today is too dependent on one business sector, auto sales. It has been a true blessing for many years to our city, and I appreciate all Marion businesses, and I hope that our auto sector will remain strong. But the blessing of the auto sector is uniquely perilous, because unlike other industries, the state legislature can redirect auto taxes from the place of sale to the place of vehicle registration. This risk is so significant that the city of Marion has a professional lobbyist in Topeka, Mr. Little, Stuart Little is his name, and one of the goals that he lobbies for on our behalf is to preserve this blessing of sales tax as it is. This blessing, however, could become a curse if the Kansas legislature changes allocation of auto tax despite our efforts, or if that one industry that we're so heavily invested in takes a downturn. It is critical to attract a diverse set of businesses to Marion, to completely utilize all vacant commercial parcels we have. We are missing out on a lot of sales tax today, and even commercial property tax, that some owners of vacant commercial property have not chosen to pay year after year. This needs to end, and it needs to end soon. I'd like to see some sort of short-term incentive to help novel new businesses and new industries get off to a great start right here in Marion. Also, in the next two years, the new library is slated to go up in Vavro Park, next to our new community center. And this is primarily a county library board project, but it will certainly be a very visible change in our community in the next two years. It's important that the city remain a welcoming partner to this project and to help it get done on time. This will free up commercial, or lands for commercial use along Shawnee Mission Parkway, which will help strengthen our city budget.
Thank you. Okay, what skills or talents would you bring to the city council?
Well, if chosen tonight, I would be the first Ward 4 council member from the west of I-35 in many years. I would be the first Ward 4 council, I've built relationships with residents in other west-side neighborhoods, and I will continue to do so on the east side as well to facilitate dialogue between my neighbors and their government. I speak Spanish, no está perfecto, but I have been practicing every day, I speak it at home and with my family. As part of the Parks Board, I've walked door-to-door in Ward 4 many times, handing out flyers to neighbors to party in your park events. I've knocked and talked throughout the city to promote the yes vote for the community center, and helping council member campaigns in the past. And I always brought something to write with when I did that, because I wanted to take notes on people's concerns, not just ask for votes. So I'm no stranger to taking, to talking to constituents and bringing their concerns to light. My IT career has trained me to think methodically, and those who know me know I dedicate enormous focus to breaking down and solving complex problems. I've gotten comfortable with public speaking, if only there was a punch card for this podium I could show you. A couple months ago, I sat down with Chris Engel one day for a meeting, and we talked about a lot of things. Chief among them was that it was not terribly normal for a member of the public to be as involved as I have been with council and with staff over the last six years. And I agree. I'm not going anywhere, though. I'm not gonna stop caring about the future of the city. I'm not going to be less involved, so this is a great opportunity to officially join council, and it can be a little bit more normal for me to invest the time and the energy that I do.
Okay, thank you. And your closing question, number three, is do you have any closing comments for the city council to consider?
I sure do. When I moved here, I was an introvert. I was afraid of moving into an HOA, afraid of overbearing rules and politics, but I loved the location, the city was welcoming, and I promised myself in 2014 that if I was going to live in an HOA, my God, I would at least be an active participant. I would get to know my neighbors, use my energy to keep things running fairly and equally for all people. I'm glad that I kept that promise, and I've been elected now by my neighbors every term since our HOA began in 2015 to serve on our board. I've been part of a lot of dialogue along the way. I started attending these very meetings, in fact, and joined our Parks Board in 2017 to gain the knack of smoothly-run meetings so that I could benefit my neighborhood with that skill. I've served on the Parks Board now for many years, and it has been my honor to serve multiple terms as chairman and co-chair. I've served on a few other ad hoc boards in the city from time to time, as you're no doubt aware, and I found each of those experiences uniquely valuable in building relationships, discovering viewpoints, and opening dialogue with my neighbors in the city. Democracy is dialogue. I've seldom matured on words, but importantly, I always listen to the input from my neighbors. I think that's key for a council member, and it's been my favorite part of being on committees. I stand ready to serve alongside you and make my neighbors proud. They have trusted me to represent their HOA for years, and I believe I've been a fair and effective custodian of that trust. Today, I serve as board member and president by election of my peers in Timber Ridge Villas, with a talented VP ready to take over should you choose me tonight. I want to make my neighbors proud, representing them and the rest of Ward 4. Finally, I want to make my husband proud. His support of my civic involvement since 2018 has been unwavering, and I am proud to demonstrate my citizenship to him as he pursues his own. Oft, we take for granted the opportunity we have as Americans to do this, to speak freely to our leaders at a podium, or to publicly petition the government for redress and be secure knowing we will go home safe. That is not a luxury everyone has in this world. It's not something that existed where he came from. I want to make my husband proud of my participation here, thank you for your consideration tonight, and for your continued dedication to this community.
Thank you, Billy. Do any council members have? Okay, thank you. Do any council members have any additional questions that they have for Billy? Okay, seeing none. Okay, Billy, thank you for coming to the podium, and you're dismissed at this point.
And thank you for the opportunity.
You're welcome. Okay, and our third and final candidate this evening is Lewis Lambert. Lewis, if you could come forward, sir.
Do the best of my ability.
Thank you. All right. We have three questions for you as well, sir. Number one is, what do you think the most important issue facing the city in the next two years?
Well, I believe without a doubt, and I'm in agreement, is probably the old Kmart building. I think that's the most glaring thing, and it kind of gives us a black eye, if you know what I mean. I mean, there's been a lot of talk about downtown Marion, Marion Drive, but I think doing something with that is the priority, or should be the priority. So, that's what I'm going with.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, what skills or talents would you bring to the city council?
For the past 50-some years, I've been involved in the construction industry. I'm in a unique position to have been a controller, general manager of two of the largest roofing and sheet metal companies in town. When we began those businesses, they were tiny, and under my leadership, they both became the largest in the Kansas City metropolitan area. I think I have the intestinal fortitude, and when I retire next year, I'll have the time to focus a lot more energy on the community that I love, and that I've lived in for the last 25 years and raised my son. I think that's an important thing. I've cared for my neighbors, as you well know, and I even moved my mother-in-law into our neighborhood because I was that impressed. But I know a lot of the secrets of construction, how to drive prices down, how to negotiate contracts, value engineering, how to work voluntary alternates, how to work with the state for funding. I've been involved with all of that, and quite successfully, and I wouldn't mind sharing it with the city of Marion.
Thank you. And the third and final question is, do you have any closing comments for this city council to consider?
Well, as you know, Bob, I'm a writer. I've written a couple of books, so I think I'd like to, I'd appreciate the opportunity to give back to the community. First off, I probably ought to tell you who I am, where I came from. My father was a veteran of the Korean War, and after the war, he attended University of Illinois, and he married my mother, and it seemed like they were best at having children, and they kept having child after child. So, when my father graduated, he had to find a job, and the only job he could find was as a Missouri bank examiner, which didn't pay very much. So, the meager amount of money that he brought in, in fact, I remember one of the houses we lived in, where the boys' room was up in the attic, and it had no heat. And I still feel cold thinking about that. And so it's given me a perspective for caring for others because of what I lacked as a As for myself, after high school, I put myself through college. I've worked continuously since 1966, when I was 12, back when cars were good. I've graduated with a double major in history and English from Baker University. Since then, I've had course studies in construction law and library science. I thought I was gonna be a librarian at one time. Some of you probably know I'm a published co-author of young readers' books, written here in Marion, and been involved in the music recording of my wife Lane's music as well, mostly created here in Marion. My son Logan has lived in Marion, Marion for most of his life. His Boy Scout Eagle project consisted of building benches at what now is known as Waterfall On a side note, a waterfall is anything considered above five feet, so it actually should have been named Cascade Park, but that's neither here nor there. been named Cascade Park, but that's neither here nor there. Don't rename it. I'd also remind you that I am a business owner here in Marion. The business is Three Wishes. We try to promote local writers, musicians, artists, and craft people. So we're invested, as a family, in Marion. My potential asset here, though, would be in construction. My first construction job, as I said, started in, actually, 1967. Since then, I mostly focused on metal panels, commercial roofing, waterproofing, green roofing, and sheet metal. I've been a general manager, estimator, and controller for almost 40 years now. I have worked with all the large and most of the small construction companies in the Kansas City area and are well-connected to the leadership of those companies, as well as ample contacts in engineering, environmental, and architectural fields. I can bring in a company like J. Dunn Construction, or McAllen Gordon, or Newkirk Novak, Turner Construction, any of the larger companies. They all owe me favors. I can have them do an overview, pre-bid budgeting, pricing of any area in Marion. I think they'd be happy to do that for me. And they're connected to all the important developers in the Kansas City metropolitan area, as well as as far away as New York. I've developed many budgets for projects in my field, some of which I, we had to be very creative to get the project in budget. I helped manage the construction of IKEA and much of Marion Town Center, including design and execution. Due to my creative background, I've been able to come up with some creative answers to common construction problems. I've found ways to save schools and cities money by the productive use of value engineering. One thing I've noticed is that ownership, in whatever form, ignores the ability to purchase their own materials for their own purposes and projects. When this is done, it saves the markup of construction and can save 10% to 30% of the value of the material that would otherwise be imposed on the city or whatever. This is a significant amount. I would like to see Marion's identity and path to solidify. Right now, we're kind of at a crossroads, it seems like. I hope to help with that, and my number-one goal is to make the residents of Marion happy and proud to be a member of the community we call Marion. If I can be of service, I would proudly serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Does any of the council members have any additional questions that they'd like to propose for Louis? Okay. I see no additional questions. You're released to go back to your seat, and at this point, I'll turn the process over to Mr. Engel to facilitate the voting of the new council person.
So we've got, per city code, we have a series of debates that need to occur. So we've got, the first one, city clerk is going to hand out the first ballot. You will put your name at the top of it, and then you will circle two names on there. The three candidates are listed on there, so you will need to put your name at the top and then circle the two candidates out of the three to narrow it down for the next Then when you're done with those, I will collect those and give those to her. Do all that here.
I'll do it over there.
While Madam Clerk tallies those numbers up, again, I would like to thank all three of you for coming forward and putting your name in the hat for filling of this vacancy. And although all three of you are obviously qualified, we'll only be able to select one in the final process.
Okay, we have our voting results, excuse me. So we have seven votes for candidate Chaveta, we have six votes for candidate Crone, and one vote for candidate Lambert. So moving on to the next round of voting will be candidate Chaveta and Crone. So I will hand out another vote sheet, and you'll vote for one of the candidates.
Any questions from any council member? Everyone understands your assignment?
One candidate, candidate Chaveta or candidate Crone.
Just one.
Just one.
Hands put your name on the ballot.
Hands put your name on the ballot.
Hands put your name on the ballot, thank you.
Okay, our votes are tallied. We have six votes for candidate Chaveta, one vote for candidate Crone. That would make Stacy Chaveta our next Ward Four representative.
A round of applause for her, then. Again, thank all three candidates for coming forward this evening and putting your name in the hat. Stacy, it appears that you're going to be our next council member. I'd ask that you come forward at this time, and Madam Clerk, could you swear on our candidate?
I'm swearing.
Because I'm speaking into the wrong one.
Okay, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I am Stacy Chaveta.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Kansas.
Of the state of Kansas.
And the laws and ordinances.
And the laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Marion.
Of the city of Marion.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And to the best of my abilities.
And to the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties of council member.
Discharge the duties of council member.
So help me God. Congratulations.
And if you could take your chair up here, Stacy? Okay, I know that was a little bit different than our normal council meetings, but at this point, I'd like to give the public an opportunity to come forward and ask any questions itself. Members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken up as each item is considered. Please note, individuals making public comments will be limited to five minutes. In accordance with the governing by rules and procedures, the city reserves the right to refuse public comments that are personal or pertinent or slanderous. I see no one at this point that has signed up in advance that does not preclude anyone that's currently in the audience from coming forward. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment? Okay. I see no public comments coming forward. Okay, thank you. Next section is the mayor's report, and I actually have a few things in my mayor's report, if I can find my notes. It's been surprising. Obviously, I haven't been in this position very long, but I found out that there's a lot more than just showing up to a council meeting when you're the mayor. I've attended a number of functions, and just to kind of get an idea and to acknowledge what's been going on this last month, there's a, these are a few things that's occurred, both for myself and for many of our council members, have also assisted or been there at these events. But the Northeast Chamber Gala occurred on November 20th, okay? I, former council member Nancy Hupp, Christine Hands, Bruce Caudill, Amy Ryder, and the significant others, attended the Northeast Chamber Gala at the Marriott, okay? Now, this is one of the major fundraising events. It's both a silent and a live auction. I'm proud to say that I ran up the event or ran up a lot of the bids on several of the items, but luckily, I didn't win any of them, so it was good for the chamber, good for me both. But it was a great opportunity to meet locally with elected officials and business leaders in our community itself, so that was the first event on November 20th. On November 30th, I attended the League of Kansas Municipality Legislative Dinner at the Meadowbrook Clubhouse, and I only got a good dinner out of it. I got to meet and greet fellow mayors and legislators throughout the state. There was a great presentation that was given at that meeting that evening concerning housing needs, is what occurred there. On December 1st, I attended the Johnson County and Wyandotte County Council of Mayor's Holiday Dinner at Fiorelle's. It's a fancy place, but this event is conducted every year to give the opportunity to meet and greet other mayors, city council members, county commissioners, and state legislators in a festive setting. I was joined by Whitney Yodrich, Christine Hands, and their significant others. We sat there with three of our county commissioners sat at our table. We were very privileged to be there and try not to talk about too much politics at that time, but I want to thank my fellow council members for joining me that evening and representing Marion. Moving on, the Christmas tree lighting occurred on December 3rd. I had the pleasure of attending the first in-person Mayor Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony at our beautiful community center. The event was well-attended. There was like over 3,000 people there. Okay, well, all right, maybe not 3,000, but there were a lot, wasn't there, Anna? Yes, so we had a lot of people there. We had numerous council members, and many park board members were also there at the time. Christine Hands, Bruce Caudill, David Neal, Amy Ryder, J.K. Belayhey, all were at that event. I appreciate your attendance and want to thank you for your support of our community events. We also had Stacy there, too, so. But we had a hot chocolate was provided by Caribou Coffee, and we had a wonderful performance by the choir at the Marion Park Elementary School. All of this was topped off by a guest appearance of Santa and Mrs. Claus. It was a great evening and a community event that was well put together by our park and recreation board, our department itself. Please pass on to staff, both my and the council's, thanks for a job well done, Anna. The chili cook-off occurred on December 8th. Now, you're probably wondering what a chili cook-off is, but Amy Ryder, Christine Hands, and I were lucky enough to be judges at the annual, and this has been going on for a number of years, chili cook-off between city departments, okay? So these are all the departments that compete every year, and they have a nice trophy that's a traveling trophy that goes along with that. Though it was a tough decision, which resulted in several ties, the end result was the police department winning first place, Public Works got second, and our administration department got third. Our employees are the backbone of the community, and our appreciation for them and their dedicated service goes out to all of them. Council enjoys every opportunity we get to interact with staff, and especially when there's food involved. Please invite us anytime, so. On December 10th, there was a northeast, Christine Hands and I attended the Chamber Legislative Breakfast that was hosted at our community center. We got to hear from our state legislators and our senators about what was happening currently in the state and what their thoughts are that was going to be happening in the upcoming session that's going to start in January. So those are the things that's kind of occurred over the last, you know, couple of weeks. So there's a lot of stuff going on, and we're here to represent you and to interact with other council members and mayors and state legislators, and it's not just here in Marion. So just wanted to pass that on, and that concludes my mayor's report, Mr. Engel. Let's see, moving on. Okay, I think it's time for a public hearing. Is that correct? The next item on the agenda? Okay, and I think Director Dyer is going to come up and present some information on us in our local agreement.
Brian Dyer, Community Development Director. This evening, you have before you a couple of items in relationship to a TIF application that you received from Blocking Company. Blocking Company submitted a TIF application requesting partnership in regards to TIF increment financing for the redevelopment of 8800 Shaw Mission Parkway. We know that as a Taco Bell facility. They're requesting some assistance in the form of $300,000 for the redevelopment of that property. Their proposal is to put in a, I believe, 2,400 square foot chipotle into that facility. The process started for the TIF application really back on your meeting on November 8th, when you all passed a resolution establishing today is the day to hold a public hearing to consider an amendment to your TIF district. I'm going to walk you through that a little bit. Obviously, there's two agenda items here. The first one is an amendment to the TIF district, and then the next one will be a resolution in regards to that, if you all approve the ordinance. After I make a presentation, you'll have your public hearing, have an opportunity to hear any kind of public comments in regards to the TIF district amendment. Also present here is representatives from Blocking Company, as well as the city's bond council, Joe Sharando from Kutech Rock. So with that, up on the screen right now, you see our I-35 redevelopment district. This is the area that is in the light-shaded area. Just real brief, TIF districts and the establishment of them are guided by state statutes. Kind of the two parts to a TIF district is the actual district itself, the larger area, and then within that district, there are subset areas. Those are redevelopment project areas. Those are the things you see in there outlined with letters in there. So obviously, A through M is what the city of Marion has. Now, within each one of those areas, that's an area that could potentially have a redevelopment project plan associated with it. Not every area in there has a project plan associated with it, but quite a few of them do. And from that project plan, that's kind of where the next step in that is where the city can step in, provide financial assistance in the form of TIF financing, tax increment financing. I'll just point out one area as an example, Area F that you see on your screen right now, that is the area from 67th Street on down south. That's the area we know that is occupied. We call it Marion Point. That's the area that's occupied by the Toyota, Lexus, Infiniti, Dodge dealerships in there. So that's kind of an example. And there's some other areas in here, again, that don't have any types of redevelopment project plans associated with them. Probably one of our best examples is Area D down there to the very south. So the city council previously this year has already amended the TIF district plan. Now, the TIF district plan is, like I said, is two parts. One is the area, which is what you're seeing on here, and the other part is the actual just text description that goes along with it. That is in your council packet. This year, the council amended the TIF district plan by adding in Area M. Now, a little bit different, that amendment was different than what we're being considered this evening. Now, Area M is what we know as the Kmart property. What the council did this year was to add that area and to also designate it as a redevelopment What the council did this year was to add that area and to also designate it as a redevelopment area, Area M. So two things happened. First was an actual physical addition to the size and the TIF district. And then the second thing that happened was adding and designating that area as redevelopment, redevelopment project area, M as in Marion. So this, tonight, what the ordinance says before you is to designate the 8800 Shawnee Mission Parkway as Area Redevelopment Project Area, N as in Nancy. I have it highlighted up on the screen right now. Different one than what we did with, what the council did with Area M is this area is already within the TIF district. So it's already, there's no adding into, adding any additional area to the TIF district. It is simply designating that area as a redevelopment project area, N as in Nancy. So that is all the councils we can, asked to be considered as part of this ordinance. I will read you, like I said, there is the tap, the map part, which is adding that area in. And then also, I'll just read to you the text that is being added to, considered to be added to the TIF district plan. It is, "The boundary for this area begins," and again, describing area, "the boundary for this area begins at the intersection of Slater Street and Shawnee Mission Parkway, and then travels west approximately 140 feet. The boundary then heads north approximately 330 feet, then east approximately 140 feet to the center line of Slater Street, and then south along Slater Street to a point of beginning. This area should contain commercial, retail, and/or office facilities with supportive parking, structured parking, infrastructure, and related improvements." Again, that's a very broad description of what could potentially have happened there. Again, that is how it's spelled on the state statute. The TIF district plan is very broad in nature. Then when you start getting down to the redevelopment project plan, which is like, again, as I mentioned in the next item on the unit, that's when we get down more to the specifics of what redevelopment could happen there. Again, as I mentioned, this is obviously being, the impetus for this is an application that the city received, but this amendment to the ordinance isn't specific to that application request. It is much general, again, in describing what could potentially happen at this location. So I'd be happy to answer any, oops, excuse me, happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Do any council members have, Mr. Neal, you have a hand up?
Yeah, I have a few, a few questions, actually. In the, in the documents that were submitted with the, in our council packet, we have a financial analysis. Is that by our bond council?
That is not by bond council. That's for our financial, our financial advisor, and that is part of the next agenda item.
That's part of the what?
That's part of the next agenda item. That's part of the project plan. But I might be able to answer a question for you now, or you want to wait till?
I'll wait.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions? Mr. Neal, you want to wait till later?
I'll wait till later.
Okay, are there any, anyone on this side? Okay, at this point then, are you ready for us to?
Open your public hearing, yes.
Open the public hearing, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, we'll open the public hearing at this time. If, does anyone from the audience have any questions for Mr. Dyer? See, no, no one rushing to the podium, okay? No other questions from the council for Mr. Dyer, we already had an opportunity for that. Oh, Mr., yes, come forward. Please state your name and your address. Thank you.
Billy Crown, 6633 Wed Street. I just wanted to clarify, has this property been continuously owned by the same entity since it was operational as a Taco Bell until today, when it is in need of funds to recondition the property? No?
It's had multiple ownerships.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing no other questions, I guess we will close the public hearing. Moving along. Is there any, do you want to address the waiving of the first motion?
Yeah, just real quick, again, as is typical with these types of projects, we have a schedule. Ultimately, what we're trying to do. Kind of just, kind of walk out potential next step for this. Again, what I mentioned earlier, the next item, assuming that you all approve the ordinance, is to do a public hearing to set the public hearing date for project N. We also work with creating a redevelopment agreement with the developer. Planning Commission conduct a public hearing on the rezoning of the development plan. That's kind of the other side of this coin. One side is the TIF request, the other side is the rezoning request and the development plan request. Those of you who have been through this type of scenario before in the city understand that we try, as staff, to get the rezoning, the planning side of things, as well as the finance, TIF side of things, to be on your agenda all at the same time, really for a number of reasons. Probably the primary one is for you to get the big picture about what you're being asked to do. So for this situation, for this request, January 24th is the date right now that we're looking at to get all of those items on your agenda. And so, again, that's one of the reasons why there's a need to waive the first reading of the ordinance is in order to make sure all of those, as Mr. Engel likes to say, all the plates that are spinning in the air, stay spinning in the air, and you guys can consider everything all in one evening. So that's the purpose for requests of waiving the first reading.
Okay, Mr. Neal, go ahead.
So I'm going to be kind of dense here. So what exactly are we doing tonight? We were setting the project plan, and what does that actually, what does that mean specifically?
No, no, that is, it's a good question. So two things on your agenda tonight. The first one is the ordinance to amend the TIF district plan. That's the larger plan. That is to add redevelopment area N as in Nancy to the district plan, and then also add that verbiage that I read off as to what is appropriate for that, in that area, redevelopment area N as in Nancy. So that is what is right now on your agenda that you're considering. Now, if that gets approved, the next item is to consider approval of a resolution setting the public hearing to consider the redevelopment project plan, the sub-plan for, that's within those, the, within the TIF district, for redevelopment project area N as in Nancy. So those are the two items. The first one is to amend the TIF district plan, and then the second one is to approve a resolution to set the public hearing date for the redevelopment project plan.
So at what point would we be discussing the proposed plan that's, as part of this agreement and the financial analysis?
Sure, sure. You can obviously ask questions about the financial analysis for the next agenda item. You'll try to answer the best you can. Also, you could ask them as well as the public hearing time, or to ask for clarity and things like that. At any point in time, in regards to the project plan, you can certainly ask those questions.
Okay, thanks.
But currently, this evening, we're talking about establishing project area number N.
Correct, establishing project area N as in Nancy. And I will keep doing N as in Nancy and M as in Mary, because we'll be, hopefully, knock on wood, considering the other one here within, you know, next year, so I apologize for doing that.
Ms. Hands, go ahead.
I was just going to say, the only reason that he was bringing up the next step is because he's explaining why we're going to skip the first, we're going to waive the first reading.
Okay, Ms. Yodrich.
Thank you for spelling all this out, Brian. I appreciate it. And keep saying N as in Nancy, if only for Nancy Hupp to keep hearing her name over and over again. What happens to project area N? Should we create N, and then the rest falls through? Is it just hanging out, or does it go away? Do we have, what happens then?
No, no. If you were to pass the ordinance this evening, and then, you know, for the future approvals that occur, either the next one or the one in January 24th, that amendment would still stay in place. It wouldn't go away. It would still stay in place and would still be within your TIF district plan. So if, again, something didn't, if this one doesn't go through, some, another idea or another project could come in, and as long as it fits within those, that category, that broad description, you could, they could, we could put together a project plan for it, and they could go from there forward with it. So really, it's a, you know, approving it this evening doesn't, doesn't, doesn't make, doesn't.
It just creates a zone.
It just creates an area.
Within a zone, inception.
Right.
It doesn't obligate the council to do anything other than say that on the northwest corner of Slater and Shawnee Mission Parkway, we'd like to find, we would like commercial, retail, and/or office facilities to be developed there. And if for some reason, the next several steps were to fall apart, and someone else wanted to develop that somewhere down the road, and it didn't fit this description, we could come back and we could modify it. But it doesn't obligate the council to do anything other than to find that we believe that these uses would be appropriate at that location.
Mr. Silver, go ahead.
First of all, I want to thank Brian for answering all the questions I sent to him today. It did help clarify something, but something I'm still having a little bit of difficulty with, since this is my first experience dealing with designating a new part of a TIF district, is through all the literature that was sent to us, there seems to be a direct connection between the block company and designating this new area N. So I understand from what's been brought up tonight that we are only voting on whether we're going to designate area N for this retail designation, but it seems so directly connected to the project that was in our packet. I'm having trouble separating it. So can you explain how, how it is separate at this point? I know you've kind of mentioned that, but.
Yeah, as I mentioned, the reason we are going through this process is because of the requests that we received from them. Obviously, there's quite a bit of time, staff time, quite a bit of consultant time that's involved with this. So there is an expense to doing this, so it's something that typically the city does when there's a request to go forward with it. Just doing it in speculative nature doesn't seem to be a prudent use of resources.
Okay, thank you. I do have some direct questions, but it seems like they would be better asked down the road.
Okay, are there any other questions? Yeah, Mr. Neal?
Yeah, I, again, we keep talking about project area N, and again, this is in the weeds a little bit, but should the proposal for project area N, which is a very small portion of the north side of Shawnee Mission Parkway, should it not move forward for some reason? Can we, I'm assuming we can easily change project area N to something else at some point in time? Should there be a different project that uses a different footprint?
Yes, you certainly could. Easily is not how I would describe it, but you certainly can. You go through the same process that you're doing to get to here. No, that is certainly something the council could do.
Are there any other questions at this time? Okay, seeing no other questions, I would entertain a motion to waive the customary first reading. Ms. Hands.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council waive the customary first reading of an ordinance amending the I-35 redevelopment district.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Mr. Lehey seconds the motion. Would you call a roll? Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caudill.
Aye.
Councilmember Lehey.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, moving on, oh, Ms. Hands.
We have another motion.
Yes, I was going to say, I don't think we need any additional staff time for this. I think we're ready to move on to the actual move.
I agree with that.
I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Hands.
I move that the council approve an ordinance that makes certain findings and authorizes an amendment to I-35 redevelopment district.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, Ms. Chaveta has her first second.
Yes.
Call for the roll. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caudill.
Aye.
Councilmember Lehey.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have done those. Is it, Director Dyer is going to come up and entertain the next topic, I understand.
Yes, yes. We already covered this a little bit, but again, this next item is simply a resolution establishing January 24th as the date to hold the public hearing to consider the project plan for area N as in Nancy that you all just amended into your TIF district plan. Again, the steps for both this, as well as the amendment you just considered, are spelled out in state statutes. One of the steps that are spelled out in state statute is that your planning commission must consider the project plan as the proposed project plan to be consistent with the intent of the Marion Commentary Hints-a-Planned 2040 for the development of the city. That language is spelled out in the state statutes. At their meeting on December 1st, the planning commission did find that that is the case for this project plan. So the next step is this resolution, in which you all can set the date for January 24th as the date to consider that project plan. Obviously, there's a number of notifications and things like that that are involved with that that staff will address as those dates come up. And as I mentioned earlier, right now, we are prepared, we intend and hope to have on January 24th also the rezoning and development plan and plat that goes along with this as well. They have, being Blocking Company, has submitted that for the next city, excuse me, the next planning commission meeting. So right now, those things are lining up to be on your meeting on January the 24th. With that, again, this is just a resolution, staying the date for the public hearing. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The project plan is attached to that resolution. It's there at the back of it. So it is in your packets this evening as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions this time for Mr. Dyer? Okay, Mr. Caudill.
I, just a quick question. Do you anticipate on the 24th, we will be asked to approve the project plan?
Yes, there are a couple of things, and we'll go in a little bit more detail about what most likely will be on the 24th. The project plan for area N will be on there for your consider for approval by ordinance. Also, the redevelopment agreement will be on there as well. That's an important document. We've talked about in the past, that is really a contractual agreement that is between the city council as well as the developer, which is a little bit different. The things such as the redevelopment agreement, excuse me, excuse me, the project plan for area N, the district plan, the rezoning things, the things that will be coming to you in that, I, those are really spelled out in state statute, court law. There's a lot of rules and things we have to stay within for those issues. The redevelopment agreement is something, is very different, a little bit more, not a little bit more, it is in contract law. So that is something that gives the council the ability to really spell out more in details of what the expectation is that the council has for the redevelopment. And again, just as an example, past redevelopment agreements typically spell out a timeline for which the developer will do things, you know, milestones, i.e. tear down a building or make a pad, make the property pad-ready, or have a building open, or something like that, and at which time, you know, the city will then do a disbursement of funds and things like that. So again, just as an example of what the redevelopment agreement is, it's really more of a contract spelling out what the developer do, will do, and what the city's expectation of the developer is, and then how the city will reimburse them with TIF funds. So that's, that is what should be asked to be considered on the 24th.
Okay, Mr. Neal.
Some of the documents we have today, I would assume will be also included again in the packet on the 24th?
Yes, they will, all of them. And then also, I will mention, too, that all the information that is in the packet today is also, will be available. that is in the packet today is also will be available to City Clerk for anybody to view.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Silvers.
On the, on January 24th, when we have the public meeting, and then we also have the redevelopment agreement. At what point does council get to discuss and work with city staff to put stuff into that agreement, milestones or other items like that that we want to make sure happen? It seems like in a setting like this, it's very difficult to have those discussions in a timely manner or have the proper information provided to us that we could do that effectively.
Right. And how we usually do this is we put together a, some bullet point lists of expectations that we have for the developer. We'll be working to put those together, and we can obviously get those circulated for comments and things like that. If there is any particular things that the council is expecting, voicing them in, you know, in this type of meeting might be appropriate, just to.
Now would be the time, if there's something specific that you want in there. You want something more than a Chipotle.
Well, that, see, that's.
Or if there's other issues that the council would like to discuss, again, to indicate.
Developers are here, so I mean, they'd be happy to hear if you have comment.
Well, I do have a question for the developer. When, and unfortunately, I turned my page, but when the financial advisor was going through the process of determining whether this was going to be a successful project or not, one of the things that, I need to get to that page so I can say it correctly. One of the things that they pinpointed was that it needs to include, sorry, the impact on public services and public infrastructure and any related impacts, including indirect business development, environmental impacts, and the like. So what my question for the developer is, because the building's been boarded up for many years. And being boarded up and being across the street from another large property that's boarded up, it becomes a bit of a eyesore. And I believe the Kmart location has been mentioned as being blighted. I'm just curious at what point Block and Company or one of their affiliated LLCs took ownership of this product, project, or at least became a partner in ownership of this project? After, you know, I guess that's my question. Because I'm curious at what point they became partners in ownership of this and, because it has declined over the years.
Could you state your name and your address, sir, for the record?
Sure. My name is Mitch DeCarlo, and I'm Director of Development and Construction for Block and Company. And I live at, where do I live? 11310 Madison Avenue in Kansas City, Missouri. I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for having us here this evening and for giving consideration of this project. Our company's had a pretty long history with the city of Marion on various projects, whether they be development projects or real estate representation projects, sales of properties, leasing of properties, and so on. And I think we've enjoyed a good relationship. As it relates to the Taco Bell project, I believe that property, I'm not certain exactly of the date, but I believe that was acquired by a partnership that Block represents. It was either 2017 or 18, I don't know if Brian could, but somewhere in that timeframe. So the last, probably 2017, about the last four years. And, you know, one of the things our company has always wanted to do for the city of Marion and all the cities we get involved with is try to make a positive impact and, you know, improve, leave things better than we found them. And, you know, really, from an economic standpoint, if it was just about trying to make the biggest return, it would probably be, you know, at this point, it probably would have been more beneficial to just take the old building and lease it out and not try to redevelop the property. But, you know, we recognize that this is a gateway to the city, and it's an area that really is in dire need of some attention and improvement. And a little bit of that occurred with the redevelopment of the Freddy's property. And so I don't know if it was, it probably is clear from the information you have, but rather than keep that old building there, and like you said, it's kind of an eyesore and/or just a deteriorating building, you know, the ownership group made a conscious decision to not just lease that property out in its current state to whoever they could find that would, you know, make the most return on that investment. Instead, they waited. And, you know, during that time, it's, there's been very significant carry costs. And if you have the financial information, you can probably see that. So it's, you know, it's raised the cost of the project somewhat, but the goal was to find a national credit tenant that would justify redevelopment of the project. And in this case, it means tearing the building down and making kind of remedial site improvements to correct some issues on the site and building a brand-new building there that I think will be a, I don't think, I know it will be a very significant improvement for the city and really clean up that area and make it look a lot nicer. As it relates to the environmental or the impact on services, as part of the redevelopment process, the city requires us, the development codes require us to do traffic, you know, look at traffic impact, look at lighting, look at stormwater and so on. And so all those areas have been addressed in our development plans in the middle, which we just sent to the city maybe a week or so ago. So they'll be looked at in there. And I'm not sure if I addressed all your questions, but that's, that's kind of where, how we got to where we are right now.
Yeah, you did, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Neal?
Actually, I have a couple. One of the things that, this may be for staff, but, and then I may have one for you two. The Capitol, Columbia Capital Management Report, I have some questions about that. And is there someone who could, who, when will we have an opportunity to ask questions about that?
I can try to answer them now for you, Councilmember Neal. Or if I can't, I can ask our financial advisor to get that information for you.
Okay. Well, actually, so my understanding of the project or the proposal here that Block and Company is looking at involves $300,000. Is that an upfront funding? Or is that through recovery over a period of time for the tax increment that the project would develop?
Sure, it'll most likely be, I wouldn't say, not upfront, but it'll be very, it'll be towards the front end of it as they meet most likely certain milestones, such as having pad ready, such as having the store open, something along those lines.
So it's not going to come out of the actual property tax reimbursement as it would occur over time? We're talking about a front-loaded situation?
Correct, right. And as you, as you are aware, and maybe those of you who are new in the council, we do have a substantial fund balance in the I-35 TIF district, which allows us to do it. Now, over time, over the time of the project, it is forecast to, you know, to give, provide back about, about the same level of property tax over the time period. So while it's probably going to be front-loaded, at least that's what the initial thought process is, it is ultimately going to essentially pay for it.
So normally, were we not front-loading it, what's the difference between the 1994 base property value, which I assume we know, and what the property value will be estimated to be after this project? So in other words, $300,000, how quickly would that be recoverable under the increment as opposed to front-loading it?
That, we will, we will get that answered for you. And we'll send that to all the council.
And the other thing that's, I noticed here that about just slightly over a third of the $300,000 are non-land acquisition cost, TIF reimbursable, you know, permissible reimbursements under TIF. So 115,000 is site work and infrastructure, according to this report. And the other, the rest of it is essentially land acquisition costs. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
That is.
And then another part of this, and I just lost my document, but in the conclusions section, it, and I don't have that. But our summary of the project's net public benefits is negative $258,000.
Yes.
And that, I would like to speak with someone and understand that. I mean, I can, I can sort of read it for myself. But I guess what I'm saying is, why would we want to do a project that has a net negative?
There's, there's a couple of things with that. And I had a long conversation with a financial advisor about that exact, exact same question. The first, to answer the question directly is that it is getting a benefit in redevelopment of a project as Mr. DeCarlo mentioned, getting redevelopment, a new building gateway. Also, there's some benefits in dealing with some stormwater issues there. Also, the plan they're showing is proposing is going to improve traffic there. They're going to take away one of the entryway points. So really, that is the benefit of, that we are getting in regards to that, a redevelopment project, a new business that's not here, and some site improvements. Now, the more technical, deep dive aspect of it is what the financial consultant and I got into. What he did, he did not look at this as an incremental increase, which, excuse me, he looked at this as an incremental increase. He looked at it as if Taco Bell was operating there today and just looked at what would be the incremental value we would get. So essentially, that's what he, when he was talking in here. Taco Bell Restaurants generate about 1.5 million in sales tax, and Chipotle be, generate 1.9 million. He essentially took that increment of 400,000 and did all his calculations based upon that. Now, we know Taco Bell did not leave Marion. So it is, so it is more than incremental. Taco Bell is still here. So he and I had that discussion about why he didn't take that full benefit of 1.9 million generated in sales tax and do the calculations on that. And essentially, he wanted to make the report consistent all the way through because he took the, he looked at the incremental changes for everything. And so he essentially wanted to make it as straightforward as possible and to get it done in an expedient fashion. So that is why, that is why it came up as a negative. Because if he looked at it in regards to Taco Bell, Taco Bell is still in Marion, so we are getting benefit not only from Taco Bell, but also from the new Chipotle. So we get the benefit from both of them. It would have been, I think, and he would, I'm sure would agree, would have been a positive net benefit to the city. So there's two answers, and one's very short and one's extremely long.
Sure. And, you know, first of all, just personally, I'd love to have a Chipotle there. But, you know, I'm also trying to look after the city and the residents and where we, you know, where we spend our money. So in other words, just to re, sort of, maybe state what you just said and see if I'm right. What the consultant did was assume that a restaurant similar to Taco Bell in the same facility was there. The difference between that and spending the $300,000 and the benefit that we'd get by actually tearing it down and starting over is the negative 258,000. So in other words, if that building as exists, as it exists, were to be leased to another similar restaurant, it would actually be better for the city.
Potentially, yeah. If it generated as much revenue. Now, the question would be whether another restaurant in there in an older building like that is going to generate the same level of revenue as a new restaurant with a new building would generate. I think there would be some question of that. And then obviously, the other part that I pointed out was, it really is, a vacant building is generating no sales tax. We still have the company that generated that sales tax still in Marion, so they haven't left. So really, if we'd looked at it from the fact, from that standpoint, that it's a vacant building, nothing's going on there. So anything in there is going to generate 1.9 million of new sales tax. And so again, he did not do that for all the reasons they just said. He wanted to make it a consistent report, just looking at the incremental changes. Everything's in there.
And then I guess one last question. What is the current property tax status on Kmart property that we know?
Do not believe it's been paid?
Not that I'm aware of, it has not been paid at Kmart, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So staff's not going to leave that. If that's something that the council has, you know, is going to have, wants to have a discussion on the 24th about, now would probably be best to communicate that now instead of on the 24th.
I will communicate the fact that I will not vote for that project, this project, if we don't have some resolution on that.
Yes, yeah. Mr. DeCarlo, yes, you may come up if you'd like to come to the podium, sir.
You know, I think we appreciate the issue there and the concern. But I want to clarify and make sure that the council understands, you know, the way our industry works. We're a major real estate company. And as such, we have hundreds of different properties that we represent, different ownership groups on all these properties. And some of those are properties that we manage, some of them we manage and lease. Some of our properties that we represent groups that have for sale. And some of them are properties like Chipotle and the one across the street where the ownership group wants to develop those properties. But they're separate and distinct ownership. This group here happens to have one LLC that owns it, and I'm not even sure who the exact principles are. But the one across the street is an entirely different entity, different ownership, different partners. And so they really, from a financial standpoint, are completely disconnected. I know those people understand that they have a big tax bill there, and I'm sure they're going to pay that tax bill because they're going to have to, and they know they will. And, you know, they're also incurring penalties, so they're paying for not paying those taxes. But that really isn't something that the group that owns this building can control. And I just wanted to try to at least clarify that for you.
Is, is there a way to see, you know, the ownership principles in the two projects?
You know, I'm not sure how to answer that question. I mean, I imagine the Secretary of State has records. And I don't know, to be honest with you, I'd have to consult with other people at our company to answer that question. I don't know who they are, to be honest with you, myself. But like I said, there's probably hun, there's hundreds of properties that we have, represent, that we have representation on. And so they're, they're all different owners and different partners and so on. There may be some common partners, but they're, you know, they're all controlled differently and so on, so.
Ms. Yodric, did you have a question?
I did, I had a couple. I appreciate addressing the property tax issue. And I understand that there are a lot of little tentacles that come off of the giant octopus that is Block and Company. However, at the end of the day, the Block and Company name is associated with these projects. And it's important to us that we don't get the runaround on some of those issues. So whatever we can do to make sure that everyone's aligned on who's responsible for what is very important. Another question I have, and I just did math. I think it's just the city, just the city would get $128,000 if that tax paid, was paid up. Important to note that. What is your commitment to lead certification or having a carbon net zero building put in? I know Chipotle has well-documented sustainability efforts. And they've committed to setting science-based emissions reduction targets verified by the Science-Based Targets Initiative by the end of 2020. by the end of 2021. Will we meet those requirements?
I could say this, and again, I'm not designing the property, but the, the building that's going to be built there, and we've submitted that to the city for their consideration, the conceptual plans and the, but it's a Chipotle prototype plan. We're not designing the building. We're hiring Chipotle's architect, and he takes their design and adapts it to your site. So they're going to be the ones to dictate how that building gets built. They are the ones to dictate that, and so it will be built consistent with, I'm presuming with consistent whatever their corporate, you know, guidelines are for that.
Maybe this is a question for Brian, then. If our RDA was to dictate some kind of standard by which the building had to meet, whether it's LEED certification or solar ready or something like that, would that, what does that look like then if, if we come up against Chipotle and ask them to do something like that? And I understand you may not be prepared to answer that question.
I can answer a little bit in regards to, obviously, you all adopted the most recent building codes, which definitely increases the environmental aspect to commercial buildings in particular. So you've already taken a big step on that. If there's a desire to add a LEED certification to it, that would, that you could, if you wanted to do that in the RDA, put that in, potentially put that in the RDA for something like that. If it is LEED, if there is a desire to make it LEED certified, obviously, there's a variety of certifications. It would be a third-party certifications. It would, that, that's how LEED certification works. We wouldn't be able to do it. LEED has their own folks that do that certification. The city cannot do that. So there would be potentially an increased cost in regards to having it certified.
But we could also include other things independent of LEED certification, like solar-ready roofs or parking lots with EV charging stations or something like that.
Right. For commercial buildings, typically, they are, they are solar-ready. They are built to an aspect in regards to roof that they are typically already solar-ready. It's when you get into residential buildings that sometimes, and that will be older, even new residential buildings typically, because then when you talk about solar-ready roof, it really is the structural aspect of it to handle the additional weight. And typically, commercial roofs have no problem with stuff like that.
No, I understand. I just think there's like meeting codes, but then there's also like, we have the opportunity now to create a building that's actually going to try to work against all of the cars extra that are going to be coming through the drive-through. Thank you for your sales tax, but still, I want to bring these things up because I think they're things that not only the green team has discussed as far as different kinds of policy that we're planning on working on, but are also important in the area. I think that's it for me.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Leahy.
I do have one question, running the risk of extending this even further. With project area M is in Mary, directly south of the street, and project area N is in Nancy, what other properties in that couple block radius does Block have development agreements or representation on? I know that they're all different owners, and, but when we talk about property taxes being current on one and not on another, where else in that very direct vicinity is Block also participating?
I've got some notes, but I'm trying to think. I think that the only properties that I'm, the only properties I'm aware of that Block is involved with from a, you know, that they're involved in the redevelopment of, if you will, or in this area right here are those two properties. Now, I can tell you, I don't have my notes in my hand, but, you know, over the past 10 years or so, we've been involved, well presently, over the past 10 years, we've, we've been involved in about a dozen, or currently or over those years, are probably involved in about a dozen projects in this city. You know, Block was involved in a partnership that came into Merriam, and when the, the land over there at 67th and I-35 was in receivership or bankruptcy or whatever it was back in 2008 or '10, put together a group and redeveloped that property and created the auto mall that's there now and brought in the Lexus dealer, the Infiniti dealer, the Toyota dealer, Randy Reid. And those properties generate enormous amounts of sales tax and for the city as well as property taxes. And I've checked those, those are all current. Now, we don't own any of those, again, just like those were done for other entities, but those are all current. And the only property that I'm aware of that has any issue with taxes is the one across the street. And there's about another, let's see, I, I think that the number, let me grab my paper back here if I can.
I was just curious, looking forward, with project area M is in Mary, may or may not develop in the near future, it's definitely going to have an increase, it's going to, it's going to have an impact on the property value of all of those other properties in the area. And I was wondering where else Block might have some relationships.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, getting that thing redeveloped would be a big shot in the arm for this city and for all the property owners around there, whether Block owns them or Block doesn't own them. I mean, Block owns, well, that's, the Pegas is also represented by Block, but that's part of the M deal. But in looking at this list here, it looks like, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, one, two, three, four, five, six. It looks like there's six properties that we're involved with that are generating about 130,000 in sales tax that we're either have listed or, or we're representing the development of. That doesn't include anything for the M project because the taxes haven't been paid. And then over at the car dealerships, they're generating about, oh, it looks like a million 250 or so plus or minus a year in property taxes, and those are all paid in their sales taxes. So we, you know, it's no secret, there's one here that's a bit of a problem or a challenge, but it will get corrected as these things do.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Leahy. Any other questions? Oh, Mr. Neal.
Not to beat a dead horse, I just wanted to clarify. You said there were no other properties in the vicinity of the Shawnee Mission Parkway that you were not involved, you guys were not involved in redevelopment of, were there any properties in that quarter that you have other interests in, such as representation or just to lease an existing property at this time?
I mean, these ones, there's, there's a, let's see. The problem is they all have funny names. 8701 Shawnee Mission Parkway, the taxes are paid on that. I think that would be, that's probably the Pegas Restaurant. There's the, another one that's called, 8820 Shawnee Mission Parkway, the Shell Station next door. That's a Block-managed entity, and that's, the taxes are current on that. And then there's the Merriam North Bell LLC, which is the one we're talking about right now. The taxes are current there. The Restaurant Investors on I-35, which is the Freddy's property, those are current. And then we've got another property in Merriam at 75th and Schweitzer. It's a shopping center over there, and the taxes are all paid and current on that one also. So.
Thank you.
Those are the only ones. Those are all of our Merriam properties, at least according to, according to our VP of Finance that put this thing together.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. DeCarlo. Seeing no other questions this time, I would entertain a motion. Obviously, what we're here to discuss at this particular point is establishment of resolutions setting January 24th. It's the date for the public hearing. So I would entertain a motion for that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Hands.
I move that the council approve a resolution setting January 4th, 2022, as the date for the public hearing to consider the 8800 Shawnee Mission Parkway redevelopment project plan.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Mr. Caldell, a second?
I will second that.
Yeah, thank you. Call for the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Caldell?
Yes.
Councilmember Leahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Neal?
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta?
Aye.
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay. I'm glad we got through that. Mr. Engel, are we ready to move on to staff items or, and who is going to address that?
Director McDonald.
Okay. Please come forward, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm seeking approval to allow the mayor to execute the interlocal agreement with Johnson County for the county-assisted road system, otherwise known as CARS funding, for the 2022 55th Street improvements. The execution, execution of this agreement will allow the county to reimburse the city for allowable construction expenses not to exceed 1,049, 1,049,000. The current estimated total project cost is 2,649,309. Every year, the city provides Johnson County with a five-year plan for road improvement projects that qualify for the CARS program. For a road to qualify for a CARS program, it must carry an average daily traffic of 3,500 cars per day, be designated by the Board of County Commissioners, and also provide a direct connection between two major routes. 55th Street does meet that criteria. Last year, we applied for the funding for the reconstruction of 55th Street, which is from Merriam Drive to East City Limits. In October of this year, the Board of County Commissioners approved that funding not to exceed the 1,049,000. The scope of this project will include a full mill and overlay, the addition of sidewalks on the south side of 55th Street, the replacement of substandard curbs and sidewalks, replacement and/or lining of failing storm drainage pipes along 55th Street. We'll be installing new LED streetlights, pavement markings that include bike lanes on both sides of 55th Street. We are currently working with BAC on the design and engineering of this project. The 2040 comprehensive plan adopted by council this year has 55th Street listed as a high priority for sidewalk improvements, which includes adding sidewalks on the south side of that roadway, which currently does, does not have sidewalks. When, with doing that, we will need to acquire additional right-of-way for the property owners along 55th Street. Once we acquire that additional right-of-way, the next step will be utilities to be moved. And then after that, we anticipate going out to bid for that project in the second quarter of 2022. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have it? Ms. Ryder, go ahead.
I'm just curious, how much extra land is going to be acquired for the construction of the sidewalks on the?
I have, we're going to acquire 17,000 square feet of additional right-of-way, and then we also have to acquire 38,000 of temporary construction easements.
Okay. Mr. Silvers?
I have two questions. Seeing as though we're going to be, and I brought this up once before, seeing as though we're going to be addressing Merriam Drive and how that's laid out down the road, are we going to end up kind of redoing some of this work again at some point when we, we do the Merriam Drive project?
No, we are not. We are planning, the 55th Street project is going to be just short of Merriam Drive, and so we'll include that intersection and pass the Sonic when we do the southern portion to limit the impact on the businesses right there.
Great. Okay. And then my second question, I guess it's more of a request. I emailed you earlier this summer about how runoff from IBT, when we have a lot of rain, covers the north sidewalk with, with a?
Like a moss?
A moss. Well, not a moss, but a, let's just call it sludge because I can't think of the right word. But it becomes like an ice rink?
Yes.
And we had discussed that maybe we could do something to address that with a curb or something. Is that going to be included in the plan?
Yes, it is. We are actually putting under drains, under drains behind the sidewalk that will drain into the storm drainage area, and we've worked with, we've been talking with IBT, and we plan on clearing up some of that grub and then planting grass, and they're going to maintain that.
Great. Thank you so much.
Mr. Leahy?
My question is, have there been any coordination discussions with Shawnee about what happens on 55th continuing west? So if we build nice new bike lanes, they just end at the city boundaries?
55th Street is a, a bikeway for Shawnee, so we will actually connect to Shawnee's, I think it's Pasteneira Cavaire. I think they have sharrows or just signs where it's a mixed use.
Any other questions this side?
I wanted to just make sure that it's clear that when we say we have to acquire that property on 55th, we might have to acquire that property. It means we will have to pay for it, or we will have to eminent domain that property if the homeowners are not in agreement that they want to sell that property to us. So just so that the council is aware that that is an inevitability for that project if we're going to put sidewalks and bike lanes in.
That's exclusively on the south side?
Correct.
Primarily, yes.
Yes, there's a little bit on the north side because we're expanding the sidewalks to five feet in some of those areas, so just a little bit on the north side.
You're only expanding it to five feet in some areas, not the entire stretch on the north side?
Correct. There is some areas that the, we will not be touching the sidewalks, which is more towards the western portion of 55th Street. There's areas that we need to expand it to include, there's mailboxes that we have to include that will be part of that portion. And the, the south side will be six-foot sidewalks.
Mr. Chaveta?
Will there be any public meetings, or has there already been conversations started with the residents that we're hoping to acquire the property from?
There has not been any public meetings yet. We are getting ready to send out a letter to notify those residents.
Mr. Neal?
Just off the top of my head, it's not in my wars, I haven't walked particularly, but how many residents, residences are there that are, you know, have short front yards that might really impact their, their property? And is there, I guess we haven't reached out to any of them because you just answered the last question. Is there, is it possible? I mean, again, first question was just what, what, are there going to be some, some residents that have a significant impact to their, to their yards from this project?
The majority of, I believe, the impact would be on the south side where we have some of the long driveways, and there's some topographies really high going up to their yards. And we're anticipating building some retaining walls to facilitate that. The north side, most of that sidewalk, there's a green space between the sidewalk right now and the curb. Basically, we're just taking that green space away, and the mailbox will be right there, so they won't have to mow that grass, it'll just be all concrete.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Director McDonald? Okay. Seeing no other questions, I would entertain a motion to approve an interlocal agreement. Okay. Ms. Yodrich?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve an interlocal agreement with Johnson County for the county's CARS program on 55th Street from Merriam Drive west, to west to the limits.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second, Mr. Silvers?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Leahy?
Aye.
Councilmember Neal?
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta?
Aye.
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Councilmember Caldell?
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looks like you're up again now, Director McDonald, for CIP update.
Yes, thank you very much. I have your December CIP update. We currently have just one project that's taking place, and that is the miscellaneous storm pipelining, which is throughout the city. We have over there on Antioch from about 69th to 70th Terrace, Knox from 53rd to 52nd Street, and 53rd Street from Hayes east to England. We have a little over 1,800 feet of corrugated metal pipe that is being lined. We issued the notice to proceed to Municipal Pipe Tool Company on November 29th. The contract allows for 60 days for them to complete the project. The contractor has been in and visually inspected, camered, and cleaned all the pipes that are in these areas. We did find that there was a, an old gas main that's going through one of our pipes on Antioch, so that's delaying that portion over there. It's been there for a very long time, so the gas company will be removing that and fixing that piece of pipe before we can line it. And then the lining crew is scheduled to begin mid-January. I also have to update you on some of the 2022 construction projects that we have coming up. Again, the engineering design for 55th Street that we just previously discussed, the engineering design for West Frontage Road Improvement Project, which Road Improvement Project, which is the new curbs and gutters, additional storm drainage, additional sidewalk that connects to the Turkey Creek Trail System along with the new pedestrian bridge. Um, and we're working on our 2022 mill and overlay program, which includes portion of Farley from 55th to 57th, 57th Street, um, Farley to Perry, Hocker Drive, and the Timber Ridge Villas subdivision, which is off 67th Street. Um, we also have plans to add a trail connection from Hocker Drive to Warner Park, along with additional bike lanes and sheroes on, on Knox Street during this program. So have a busy construction schedule coming up for 2022. I'm here to answer any questions on any of these topics.
Any questions for Director McDonald? Seeing no questions, I, I think you're...
Would you, would you share with everyone what you shared with me about that you're covered on snowplow drivers?
Yes, we, we are, we currently have enough snowplow drivers. Um, we're not going to need them in 2021. So, yeah, so some municipalities are struggling for drivers, but we currently have enough drivers to, uh, and our trucks, so.
That's wonderful news.
Waiting to go. But we like to weather the way it is right now.
As long as I can keep up my Twitter, where with Shawnee on their live map versus our live map, I'll be happy with progress.
And we are upgrading that system too, so you'll see the new system come January, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Engel, do we have any other staff items?
Only item I have, Mayor, is please take one of our, uh, take a flower home, please, or plant, flower, plant, whatever we call them.
Okay.
Poinzetta, thank you.
Poinzettas, okay.
Thanks to the public work staff for, uh, as they do every year, bringing those in for council members to take home.
Awesome. Thank you. Do we have an executive session this evening?
We do not have an executive session, no, sir.
No executive session? Okay. Now, I do understand we're still having a work session after this meeting's concluded.
We will be as quick, as quickly as possible.
Okay. So, so, uh, having said that, when we adjourn here, don't just, you know, run off or anything. So I would entertain a motion...
We have a 10-minute break, right?
Oh, we, oh, we do have a 10-minute break. Excuse me. Yes, I just don't leave the building. So, okay, please come back. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Ms. Hands makes a motion, and Mr. Neal seconds. Uh, go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Say aye.